I'm going to call this meeting to order. Can everyone stand for the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God. The movement of liberty and justice for all.
Reading and approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those? Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the board to address the opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only.
We received no agenda emails today.
Resolutions. Twenty-one dash zero one seven eight granting this Scranton Tomorrow funding request. Brian?
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby granting partnership funding request for the Scranton Tomorrow Organization for the July second fireworks display. To support the fireworks and the related expenses for a total amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Maureen McGuigan.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this is what we do annually because our insurance does not cover fireworks. So Scranton Tomorrow is gracious enough to be our partner. And they handle all the logistics, but we are the sponsors of the event. So this money is just, this is just allowing us to give them the funding for the fireworks.
And Maureen, what time the fireworks going off on Friday?
Sorry, Friday at nine thirty P M from the.
And it's first Friday also, right, Ma?
Yeah, that's why we did it. Rather than it just being a seven-minute show randomly, we thought we would tie it with some of the other activities downtown. So it's more of an event, a safe event, but still there's other things going on.
Any more questions for Maureen? Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one seven eight?
Sure.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Maureen. Resolution twenty-one dash zero one seven nine, accepting the proposal from the Summermill, Summerill Group.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal from the Summerill Group LLC after receiving the recommendation of the prison board for the preparing and submitting an application to the United States Marshal Service and then negotiating a new per diem rate. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. I believe one of the attorneys will be speaking upon this.
That's correct. I review the contracts. This is a renegotiated contract with Summerill Group. What they essentially do is they perform more negotiations and undertake those department relating to the U S Marshals and housing of detainees. We do house in Lackawanna County Prison on their behalf. I don't have the specifics first. I haven't have the contract in front of me, however, in reviewing it. It is a very, very good contract and based upon their past performance, they ended up, based on the last contract, I think accruing about three million dollars or more worth of income to the county as a result of our detaining some of the defendants on behalf of the U S Marshals. So he is very positive that he'll be able to negotiate a good contract for us going forward. He anticipates, of course, an increase to the current rate. So for those reasons, I'd recommend that the commissioners consider entering into the agreement. And let me just say it's also performance-based, meaning he gets paid the first half of his fee, which I think his total fee is about forty grand. He gets paid the first half of the fee as he begins the process, but doesn't really get the second half of the fee until, in fact, he negotiates a revised or modified contract and secures a new rate for it. So it's all good. Thank you.
Any questions for Frank? Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one seven nine?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Any nays? Opportunity for the board, the public to address the board. Tracy?
I do have one email and it's quite lengthy. It is from Alex Latorito. He is from Scranton Newton Road Rear and he says, hello, I just submitted this letter to the editor of the Scranton Times. In case it is not published here, it is in full. Lackawanna County should abandon property tax reassessment and focus on leveraging our swing district electoral status to shift the burden of funding onto the wealthiest Pennsylvanians. Property taxes, when they were originally conceived, were an effective way to distribute the wealth of rich landowners to fund public services for the rest of us. Across America, as workers joined unions and life expectancies improved, the middle-class group. More and more of us have become homeowners, making property taxes a greater burden borne disappropriately by the working class. Many of us are tenants who pay the taxes with increased rents. We need local and state income tax brackets, also known as a graduated income tax, to relieve the tax burden on working families. The Pennsylvania Budget and Policy Center reports that all of our neighboring states do it this way. The Institute on Tax and Economic Policy has listed Pennsylvania as one of the, quote, terrible ten states with the most unjust tax system. It's not hard to understand why. According to the report, state and local taxes take a little over twelve percent of the income of the poorest fifth of households. They take a little over ten percent of the middle fifth income bracket. But they only take a little over four percent from those in the top one percent of households according to income. Working families pay a vastly disproportionate amount of their income towards local and state income taxes, while millionaires and billionaires in Pennsylvania enjoy the same tax rates. The richest zip codes, in turn, can afford better schools and services by taxing properties. While counties like Lackawanna and cities like Scranton struggle without the boon of revenue a progressive tax system would provide. What is the holdup? Unlike most states, Pennsylvania has a uniformity clause in our state's constitution which prohibits taxing any one class of income at different rates. It has stood in the way of creating what most states with an income tax have, a graduated system in which those with higher incomes pay at a higher rate. NPR reports that a consequence of our uniformity clause is that our state and local taxes taken together are among the most regressive in the entire country. The vacuum of revenue from a progressive income tax leaves our municipalities and counties with fewer and fewer options as our housing stock built in the early twentieth century depreciates and curtails property tax revenue while the city and state's income tax must remain flat. Reassessment is not the answer. It will take a constitutional amendment in Pennsylvania to change the uniformity clause, but it is the best and most permanent way for us to relieve the burden of local taxes on our residents. In doing so, the state could raise badly needed revenue for our schools, roads, and services. Across the state, municipalities and school districts could use their revenue to offset property taxes and not raise them. While we await for the amendment to the state's constitution, the proposed fair share tax makes sense in the interim. According to the Pennsylvania Budget and Policy Center, the Pennsylvania Senate bill would amend the tax code, cutting taxes on wages and interest for the middle class and increasing taxes on the richest Pennsylvanians, big business profits, capital gains, dividends, royalties, and estates. Under that plan, Pennsylvania would still have a more competitive tax rate than New York and New Jersey. With elections for most state legislator seats, Senator and Governor in twenty twenty-two, Lackawanna County is the prized county in the primaries and general election. By demanding a progressive income tax system from Harrisburg, the county commissioners can lay the blame for funding crises at the feet of those responsible. And that is all.
That under consideration and send a response or?
I'd love to say something. I, you know, I agree with him. I think it's a, it's a great concept. It's not something the commissioners can unilaterally do. We are of the sixty-seven counties in Pennsylvania. We're the last two or three that have, haven't reassessed. At this point in time, unless the state legislature does something, we have to, in order to do what he said was mandated by the state, uniform tax. We're obligated. That's our responsibility. We, you know, it's, again, I agree with him. I think the guy's got a valid point. And he is right. And it should change, but we can't change it. We don't have that authority. Okay, what we can do is reassess. What we need to do is reassess. It's relatively in most states, you know, he spoke about other states, most states do it on a relatively regular basis. Okay, some as often as once a year, some as often as three, every three years, some as often as every six years. Pennsylvania doesn't have that one. Their counties aren't obligated until a court forces them to. It shouldn't come to the court. Commissioners should have the nerve, the political foresight, the political ability to just do what is right. And that's what I am suggesting. I understand what he's saying. I don't disagree with him. But we can't, we can't wish that the state legislature is going to do something better because so far they haven't. And the whole legislature should be changed, in my opinion. That's, but that's another issue. That's a fight for another day. All right, I'm done. Thank you.
I think everybody knows reassessment hasn't been done in fifty-two years, I think, has it been?
Maybe, maybe more than that now.
The fifty-three. And my understanding of reassessment is that the whole point of it is to
Fair.
inequalities across the county. So I agree with Jerry. And I just was wondering if Tracy, if you could please provide me with a copy of that email.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion or any other?
Well, I want to touch on one thing that's I've been looking at, working on for the past week or so. I've been following closely the controversy that's going on regarding these filing of liens and excessive attorney fees charged for collecting the delinquent taxes. And I just want to say that I do not agree with the ten percent fee that's being charged at any taxpayer. I understand that additional agreement has been discussed whether Lack, whereby Lackawanna County would pocket fifty percent of this fee. I disagree with that as well. And I believe that fifty percent being discussed should be returned to the taxpayers that have paid it. And I'm concerned with the county reported agreement with Attorney Joyce beyond the issues raised recently by the Times relative to the county code of ethics. There is also section eleven oh three, Restricted Activities subsection F of the Public Official and Employee Ethics Act, which states no public official, public employee, or his spouse, or child, or any business in which the person or his spouse or child is associated, shall enter into a contract valued at five hundred dollars or more with the governmental body with which the public official or public employee is associated, or any subcontract valued at five hundred dollars or more with any person who has been awarded a contract with the governmental body with which the public official or public employee is associated, unless the contract has been awarded through open and public process, including prior public notice and subsequent public disclosure of all proposals considered and contracts awarded. In such a case, the public official or public employee shall not have any supervisory or overall responsibility for the implementation or administration of this contract. Any contract or subcontract made in violation of this subsection shall be voidable by the Court of a competent jurisdiction if the suit is commenced within ninety days of making the contract or subcontract. But before this ninety-day limit is encountered, I'm requesting a written legal opinion from our county solicitor, whether Lackawanna County can legally or lawfully enter into a contract with someone who served as the tax claim director and legal justification for the same. I'm requesting a copy of all signed contracts with Attorney Joyce and his firm. And I am making a motion that within thirty days Lackawanna County ordered the refund of the full fifty percent of the fees collected by Attorney Joyce, which are being surrendered to Lackawanna County, otherwise identified as half of the ten percent fee to each taxpayer who paid their fees. Thank you.
I would think that this is something we should possibly talk about, but let's, let's get one thing straight from the very beginning here. This is not a contract that we created. This was created by the city of Scranton with the assistance of their solicitors, and I think, believe our solicitor Frank Ruggieri was a part of it. But it's their contract. They passed it at three council meetings. The mayor signed it. They sent it to us. And then we approved it. We're the ones that are getting the shit kicked out of us in the paper. Okay, over this contract that they initiated, not us. This is brand new. We've never done this before on behalf of the city. It's something that should have been done a long time ago, and it wasn't because the city was reluctant to do it. Not because their people are getting charged too much, but because they had other interests involved. Now we're collecting money and that law firm is doing a particularly good job. So it went from collecting eight or nine hundred thousand dollars a year to two point eight million dollars a year. So the last thing the city wants us to do is we have the right to withdraw from that contract. That's something we can do. We have the right to do that. We can give them sixty days written notice and withdraw from it. We can't change it. We don't have that right. It's their ordinance. They passed it. We approved it. Okay, we can't do that. We have fiduciary responsibilities. The people that are being penalized are the ones that aren't paying their taxes. The people that are paying their taxes are benefiting from this. This is absolute nonsense. Do I disagree with that concept, Chris? No, I think you're right. We can talk about this and figure out how to fix it. But we had no idea how much we collect. We had no idea how much Joyce had make. Okay, he was the one that was in that office. He's the one that knows about that office. Because some, he's making too much money. Whose opinion is that? Okay, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. But we didn't know that was going to happen. We had no idea. So again, I think it's something we can talk about, but to, you know, make a motion to do that without talking about it is absolutely. So good luck with the second.
Well, Commissioners, if I, if I may just respond, because I think the bulk of those statements really come and are directed towards me. So first, I think it's very, very important to point out what Commissioner Natariani has already pointed out, that this is a contract that was initiated by the city of Scranton and requested of us on their behalf. I'm not going to go through the details again, as I've done it for hours with the Scranton Times.
Hours and hours and hours.
Well, with Commissioner Natariani, Commissioner Dominic, and Commissioner Schirmack, and his solicitor, Attorney LaBelle, as recently as last week. So the comments today and all the requests today and the motions today, these are things I'm hearing for the first time. I know that Commissioner Schirmack was provided with the agreement because I know I sent it to Attorney LaBelle in January, and I have the email to confirm that, and I've had discussions with Attorney LaBelle, and that's all memorialized in writing. So I'll be happy to provide all of those documents again to everyone and Commissioner Schirmack and Attorney LaBelle, as I've already done. But here's the thing. The premise here that this needs to be fixed is incorrect, and it's the wrong narrative. It assumes there's something wrong or that we've engaged in a practice that is wrong or illegal. And that was my point two weeks ago at our public meeting when I made my comments, because it is not wrong. It's a negotiated agreement. And the fact that one party to the contract loves the fact that they're getting millions and millions of dollars in one hand, but an attorney or a firm who's working diligently to collect those funds on their behalf is being paid too much is simply just a matter of opinion. And I'm happy to have a discussion about that and be reasonable about it. But what I'm not willing to do and what shouldn't occur is a discussion based on this narrative that there's something wrong. There's not something wrong. And it is wrong to continue to say that and impute the, the insidiousness of all of this and impute upon good people, the tax claim office, the treasurer's office, the bar blineties of the world, and the people that are down there killing themselves to make this happen for the city of Scranton and its residents. So that's all I can say right now. I'll be happy to provide all those documents to everyone, and I'll stay publicly, as I stated in the media, and to all of the commissioners. And Attorney Frederickson, who's been here longer than I and who has been the chief of staff before and who has been county solicitor before. Two things. Number one, professional service agreements are not required to be bid on. Now, we can all talk about in a perfect utopian society or world that we'd like to bid every contract and put it out for an RFP. It's just not feasible. And I'm not going to start doing something that's not required or feasible just because people say we should do it. If there's a good, sound, legal reason, I'm going to do it. But I'm not going to start a process for myself or any future solicitors, which really serves no legitimate purpose. So the notion that that contract should have been bid out is simply wrong, and it shouldn't have gone out for an RFP. Could it have? Yes, it could have, but it's not required. In fact, no professional service agreements relative to any attorneys before me presently, or perhaps even in the future, have or will be put out for bid. That's number one. Number two is, the reason it's not a violation of our existing policy is that Mr. Joyce, to the best of my knowledge of what I've been advised, was never a county employee. He did not receive W two income. He was an independent contractor. He was an independent contractor when he was the solicitor, getting paid a stipend of a thousand dollars a month. And when he was the interim tax claim director, my understanding is he would bill for that. He was not paid as an employee. Therefore, it's not a violation, in my opinion, relative to our existing policy. Our existing policy precludes, one, a county employee from serving in dual rules, not from serving, but from collecting remuneration and doing, and dual rule, or, or if they were an employee, from doing something else for a period of time thereafter. That's not the factual situation with Mr. Joyce, as I understand. And if I'm incorrect in that regard, then, then I'm incorrect, but I did do my due diligence and ask around about that. So unless somebody has any other knowledge or facts to the contrary, I'm happy to listen. But we got to stop with this narrative. I understand people have different opinions and everyone is entitled to them. But to Commissioner Natariani's point, we are getting the shit kicked out of us almost illegally for doing but, but doing a fantastic job and creating a system which is putting millions of dollars back into the revenue, or back sending millions of dollars of revenue back to the city of Scranton.
And not penalizing the people that pay their taxes on time. And I understand that everyone can have issues, and I don't have a problem with trying to help people. But this is a ridiculous narrative, as you would say.
And Commissioner?
It's from, it's from the city, that was their contract, that they approved prior to us enacting it.
And can I just, let me point out this fact, because this seems to be lost on folks. There's approximately seventy thousand residents in the city of Scranton. There were approximately twenty-six hundred liens filed, so we're talking about probably one percent or less. We understand there are many reasons why people can't pay their taxes timely. Some just decide, some can't, some, they fall on hard times, they have family issues, personal issues, employment issues, of course. And then there's, then there's a certain percentage that just, they work the system. They don't pay it. In this instance, before any liens were filed, I know everyone knows this, but I think it's very important to refresh everyone's recollection. There were two letters, notices that were sent out to the delinquent taxpayers. If those delinquent taxpayers got those letters, received them, and contacted the Tax Claim Bureau, they could make arrangements with the Tax Claim Bureau to go on a payment plan, and there would never, ever, ever be any lien filed. So the ten percent that, that we're getting killed over is not even applicable but for those folks who had the liens filed. There was eight hundred, almost eight hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars collected and sent up to the city of Scranton just from the two notices that were sent out before there were any liens filed. And now, once the liens are filed, yes, the delinquent taxpayer bears the burden of that fee. No different than on our own individual tax bills where you have a discount period, a face period, and a penalty period. If you choose to pay it during the penalty period, which you have a right to do, you're going to pay more than you paid at the discount period or if you paid in the face period. It's really no different here. If you don't pay your taxes timely, whatever the reason may be, and you don't address the issue before a lien is filed, then you're going to pay more at the end of the day than you would have paid had they been paid timely or entered into a payment. I mean, if that doesn't work for folks, that's okay. The city can absolutely terminate this agreement at any point they desire. And I think everyone knows what my position and advice was relative to this contract because we are every day getting beat up and killed over it. It's wrong and it needs to stop.
Frank, if I may, I don't believe that Commissioner Schirmack was opining on the legality of the contract or the efficiency of the Joyce firm's work. He was merely asking a question as to whether it was lawful to enter into the agreement, and he's asking you for a legal opinion based on the Public Official and Employee Ethics Act. The other thing he's expressing is his opinion, and it's just his opinion. He's not speaking for anybody else that I know of, that now that this money has been coming in in such large amounts, it appears that the ten percent is too much of a burden to put on the delinquent taxpayers. That's, he's giving you his opinion, which, as you said, everybody's entitled to their opinion. So I don't know why, you know, Commissioner Natariani is attacking Commissioner Schirmack for?
I'm not attacking him.
Well, then I apologize. I thought, I thought you were.
Commissioner Schirmack at all. All right, I'm attacking what's been going on for the last three weeks with this nonsense, that we did something inappropriate.
I understand.
We did not do that. Commissioner Schirmack is well aware that was Scranton's ordinance that they sent to us after they passed it, that we voted on, and Commissioner Schirmack voted to approve it also. Okay, we all did, because it was logical and it made sense. That's what we did. We did the right thing. They asked us to collect taxes for them. That's what we're doing, and we're doing a good job at it. Am I against talking about it again? I am not. But to infer during the course of a meeting without talking about it first, that, you know, we did something wrong is wrong.
Commissioner Natariani, Commissioner Schirmack has not said that the county did anything wrong. Just expressing his opinion.
I was looking for a second.
I would remind you that at the last meeting, you made a motion without discussing it with Attorney Schirmack in advance.
That's not true at all. He's well aware of my position on reassessment.
Well, he wasn't aware.
Well, he may tell you he didn't know about, but that's not true. All right.
So PJ, let me just respond by saying, I heard Commissioner Schirmack, and I understand what he asked for, and I'm happy to provide a written opinion. But please acknowledge that you and I have already had those discussions, and everything I just reiterated here is what you and I have talked about previously, along with Commissioner. and everything I just reiterated here is what you and I've talked about previously, along with Commissioner Schirmack, as, as, as early as last.
Don't, don't sit there and, you know, you, you don't know anything about this. That's nonsense.
Can I say something, please? Um, I, I just want, this is directed towards Frank. I'm looking at the ordinance number two six nine, that was the second reading on December second, twenty twenty. Am I correct when I say that that ordinance, uh, passed uh, or approved the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county?
Correct.
Okay, and can we also agree that in two thousand and sixteen, the ordinance uh, which was drafted, that's where section nine included the ten percent attorney's fees and ordinance number two six nine ratified that two thousand and sixteen, uh, ordinance um, on December second, twenty twenty. Is that correct?
I, I don't have it in front of me, but I think that is, yes, essentially correct, Commissioner.
Okay, and the intergovernmental agreement, um, and the ordinance that we passed on December second, twenty twenty both refer numerous times to the two thousand and sixteen ordinance containing the clause about the ten percent attorney's fee. Is that accurate?
It's correct.
Okay, and just to, for clarification, um, all three commissioners passed that ordinance, including Chris. So I just want to make a point that no issue was raised and there was no objection uh, at that point to passing, uh, the intergovernmental agreement and the ratification of the two thousand and sixteen ordinance all commissioners signed.
Frank, if, if, Frank, if I, if I may, you're a hundred percent right. You, myself and Commissioner Turemack met last week for probably over an hour and a half, and you answered all our questions. You, you, you spent a lot of time with us and that was very appreciative. Uh, there's two contracts here. There's the intergovernmental agreement, which Commissioner Turemack did vote in favor of. But there's also the separate contract with Attorney Joyce and/or his firm that was not, as far as I know, voted on at a meeting. And Mr. Christopher Turemack wasn't given an opportunity to vote on that.
Well, then PJ, then what you're saying is he voted on the ten percent attorney's fee, and that's okay. But because he didn't get to vote on the attorney, that's the problem you have. So it's not the ten percent, it's the law firm that we're using.
Now, that's what you're saying, Commissioner, with all.
No, I mean, that's what you're saying. He voted on the ten percent attorney's fee. It's very clearly stated. He voted on it. He, he did not object to it. He voted on it and signed the ordinance approving the two thousand and sixteen ordinance and the intergovernmental agreement very clearly specifying a ten percent attorney's fee. So either he agreed with it and he signed it, or he didn't read it, which is.
Well, if I, if I could just butt in here for a second, you know, for my own opinion on this. Let, let me just say this. I, I, I will tell you this, there has been no place that I have gone over the last month where I haven't had citizens come up to me saying, keep doing what you're doing, because they pay their taxes on time. And they're a little ticked off that these scofflaws, for the most part, not the people who are having some tough times after the pandemic, but the scofflaws, for the most part, are getting this sense from the newspaper or from inside City Hall that they deserve a break. They don't deserve a break. All right? And the citizens that are talking to me don't believe they deserve a break. Okay, they believe that they should pay their taxes, and the reason why they should pay their taxes and pay their taxes on time uh, for those who can pay their taxes, is, is a very simple process that everybody that budgets, whether it's a township, borough, city or county government understands. And the fact of the matter is, is that if you have a hundred million dollar budget and approximately ten percent of that you know are not going to pay their taxes because they're delinquent all the time, every year. This is not something that just occurred over the past year, by the way. These are people who have been not paying their taxes for a very long time. However, we contracted just for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, okay? But the reality of it is, is that the burden of the taxes go on, fall upon the other ninety percent of those who pack, pay their taxes on time. So when you're budgeting for a budget, say of a hundred million dollars, you've got to budget a hundred million dollars on the ninety percent backs. Okay, because you know you can't go after, you can, but you know you're not going to get the other ten percent. This mechanism was put in place long before the county ever got involved with the city of Scranton, the lien mechanism, okay? It is primarily solely for the city of Scranton. And the tool that we're using it for on behalf of the city of Scranton has produced over three million dollars. Okay, in delinquent taxes. That is three million dollars that the city of Scranton would not have. So in budget time, when the mayor and the city council, regardless of their names, get together at the end of this year and start doing their budgeting, they can now look upon whether or not they want to keep this contract in place, because at that point, they'll note their percentages. Maybe it's ninety-four, maybe it's ninety-five percent that they'll be able to collect, and they won't be putting any more taxes on the ninety percent that always pay their taxes on time. For this to be other than, anything other than whether the paper or someone else doesn't like the Joyce law firm, I don't get it. It could be the O'Malley Law Firm or the Jeffers Law Firm or the Natariani Law Firm. Ten percent is small potatoes when, when lawyers are charging. It's usually thirty percent. Now, is the number because of what's coming in high? Yeah, it is. But that means it's working. The mechanism is working. The city of Scranton's residents, me included, are now getting three million dollars that we would not have gotten without this. And bear in mind, when you use private industry to do this, they extract their fees directly from the tax money themselves. So the three million dollars that we're giving to the city of Scranton, they're getting three million dollars. They're not getting money extracted from that and getting two point five million dollars or two point four million dollars. And like I said, I have not gone anywhere. Businesses, friends' homes, out on the street walking the dog, where people have not applauded us for what, the job that we are getting done here. That's all I have to say.
It was, it was done by a private company. They charged more, and we had no idea where this was going to go.
Right, the private company, the private company before charged fifteen percent, and it came out of the taxes, but then it lowered the amount that the city was able to collect substantially.
They collected three million dollars.
When I, I'm sorry, but when I had conversation, a conversation with the city official, he indicated that this was triple or quadruple the amount that they normally take in. So it's record breaking, that, the amount that we're sending the city.
You're, you're exactly right, Madam Commissioner. On average, the city would collect approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand a year previously. Right now, five months into it, we've delivered, as Chief Jeffers correctly stated, somewhere around three million dollars at the pace at which this program, and I'm proud of the program, for all the smashing that I've taken, I'm taking, we're taking. We're only talking about it because it's so successful. Remember, ten percent of three million is a big number. Ten percent of zero is still zero. So we're, we're, we're talking about it because it's so successful. But here's the thing at the end of the day, just keep this all in mind, for all the beatings we're taking. When the city of Scranton says, well, we didn't know about it, we didn't know this, we.
It was a lie.
Well, here's, here's all you need to know. Two things. Number one, they asked us to use the liens. Now, you don't have to take my word for that, but here's what you can do. If you go back and look at their proposed twenty twenty-one budget, their proposed twenty twenty-one budget exponentially increased the amount of anticipated property tax delinquent collections. Do you know why? Because they anticipated and knew that the county, county tax claim bureau would be collecting them. Because they knew that liens would be filed. So again, I've been saying this for weeks. All they have to say is, stop doing what you're doing and stop with their hand out the window, collecting the check every time we go up there. And then in the other hand, taking the check and trying to beat us over the head as we're walking up the steps. And any other reality in which we, we work or we operate, I said before, you need two parties proceeding in good faith to a contract in order for the contract to work. If that doesn't work, then the contract doesn't work either.
One final thought, Frank. There's two bodies in, in the city of Scranton too. The legislative body which passed this ordinance numerous times before it was sent to the, to the mayor for their signature, they're not complaining.
You don't hear from city council.
They're not complaining.
Nobody.
They're, they're very, I could tell you straight up, they're very happy with the amount of money that's coming in.
Sure they are. All right, thanks, Mr. Jeffers. I'm not, no, I'm not, no, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.